To Tisdale, any questions? All in favor or zero, motion carry. Gary?
To the policy agenda, we're adding item 4C and substituting resolution for an application for conditional use for ten recreational vehicle sites within an existing mobile home park located at 12200 Old Highway 67. To the consent agenda, we're adding 5S resolution authorizing construction agreement with CXS, CSX. And to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket and the amount of $16,119.
There's amended. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions on amended agenda? All in favor? Okay, five zero, motion carry. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I apologize for missing class last time, but I do appreciate everybody's while I was out. They had a little procedure that turned out good, and I appreciate everybody. I'm back, so to speak. But I do thank y'all for thinking of me and my family, so I appreciate that. The last day of Black History Month, we have an event at the Grueh Center tonight. And so I'm just happy to be here unless I've forgotten anything, except for Frank. That almost concludes my report. Frank, give us a little insurance update.
Thank you. I have a little packet in front of y'all. All it is is kind of showing y'all the state of the market right now. I was over in London when they were signing reinsurance treaties over there. It is as bad as what you see in the media right now. It is not as bad as Louisiana or Florida at the moment. We still have capacity, but this will be the worst from a rate standpoint that we've had since Hurricane Katrina. And on top of that, the carriers are requiring pretty massive valuation increases. Luckily, Biloxi, the administration has stayed up with inflation from a construction standpoint and just approved another increase. So y'all will not see the valuation increases that some of y'all's counterparts will see across the coast, but you will see rate increases. And so we're going to be looking at this multiple different ways like we have in the past, but it's going to be a very rough renewal. On top of being a rough renewal, it's going to be a very last minute renewal. We'll be bringing in numbers, worst case scenario, as soon as possible. But in some of these cases, we're renewing the day of the renewal. It's that bad. We have several carriers after Ian, who has exited out of the public entity sector completely. And so just wanted to give y'all a heads up of kind of where we are from an insurance standpoint. I'll obviously be meeting with the insurance committee probably more often than what y'all would like between now and then.
You'll be back later in the month before...
Yes, we'll probably, well, I'll probably be in front of the council. I'd ask probably two more times. And then once after renewal, because terms and conditions are going to be pretty difficult. There's some exclusionary language that they're throwing in these policies right now that will eliminate a lot of property, outdoor property, that we have covered right now. And so as we work through this and try to get some of these exclusions taken off, that's going to take some time.
Question real quick, Frank. I'm assuming that homeowners are facing these same issues, these same increases?
We're seeing homeowner increases, especially close to the border. But we don't, the difference between the commercial market and the residential market, there's still plenty of competition on the residential side. So you're not seeing increases. And also, they have what's called inflationary residential policy, and so you're not seeing the valuation increases as high as you're seeing on commercial. Some commercial properties that we know have a value at $50 square foot that probably should be 150. Well, the carriers are demanding 100% of that 150. And so you're having valuation issues which increase your deductibles on commercial along with rate increases. And so it's worse than Katrina in that sense.
Okay. And thank you, Frank, for keeping us informed. You do a good job of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bordeaux.
Thank you, Frank, for like the Apostle Paul. Only good news, right? Spread the good news.
Good news?
Yeah, that was good. Thank you for, as Paul said, thank you for keeping us abreast of what's going on. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're going to move on to the no departmental reports. We're going to move on to council report. Mr. Lawrence?
I had a couple calls on the mic on Judge Seacool, where he's supposed to be moving a new, to the old American Legion building. It's supposed to like, is that Back Bay, Michigan going to put a homeless food place there? Judge Seacool.
Yeah. I'm going to say, that's the Fred Swan building?
That building, that building, which I understand used to be the old Honda shop years ago, was given to Loaves and Fishes by the owner, and they're going through DRC right now to get approval to go in and restore that building and add a parking lot. It's in the process right now. So we haven't seen actual renovation plans yet, but we expect to see those pretty soon.
They're going to try to fence it in or something, because all the neighbors are worried about what you want to, just like we did on Division Street. And Chief Miller can tell you that. They want to pin the streets all over the place. You got to control them. Now, you putting one, not you, they're putting one in the middle of a neighborhood, you know, you got Forest Hill, a lot of people, they're barely drive. So I mean, it's something they have to put them and close them inside.
This property backs up to the apartments that are there behind it, and one of the recommendations from DRC was that they enclose the rear so that they would be separating the commercial from the residential.
Yeah, but I mean, the biggest problem is at the front. When they're coming down the street, when they're coming down Porter, when they're coming down Forest.
Yes, sir.
And when they're coming down Judge Seacool, you know, they're all walking in heat, and that's the problem.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of people concerned, so we, don't be surprised, because a lot of people complaining about that. So I need to bring that up and let you know about that.
Okay.
And Mayor, we keep talking about this buying money. Are we ready to start fencing in some of these playground properties?
Yep, we talked today. I think, Christie, as far as the fences, I think we got that...
Ike Sabaro?
Forty-nine thousand for that, yeah. Along with some of the AJ Holloway Sports Complex, I think we're moving forward with all of those things. And I think we've got some paving in order too, right, as far as...
I know we had a...
It's ready to bid, almost, right?
At the Grueh Center, we're trying to replace that fence, but also across the street, the Civic Center, that fence has fallen down. Have we looked into...
We haven't looked across the street that I'm aware of, but we will.
Well, I mean, you know, we've got to make our property look good. We can't have fences falling down.
I don't know what fence you're talking about, but we'll look at that. I haven't looked at it personally.
Yeah, well, you need to probably go by there and check that out.
Okay.
Because there's just some things going on that, you know, you want the property to look nice, cleaned up. And on a hot average, I know that we cleaned up pretty much downtown on both ends. I don't think the street was cleaned as well as it should have been. And I'm not talking about the bees, I'm talking about just keeping it clean. Downtown, when they went through that and cleaned up all the bees, and I did pretty good, but you go across the Division Street, they got bees up and down Division Street in different areas where they put the floats and threw them all on it. So I said, well, we need to clean up the city, you know, it's all the streets, keep it all clean. Phil could probably tell you more about his area, but there's a lot of stuff just needs, just make it look a little better, when you're sort of like trimming your yard and finishes it off, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Newman? Okay, Mr. Demming?
No report.
Dr. Tisdale?
Jerry, on that new Loaves and Fishes location, would a conditional use be required at that location? I'm assuming it's commercial.
Yes, sir. I believe it's either a zoning change or a conditional use is going to be required as a part of that application coming forward. I can't remember exactly, but I'm almost certain that it's conditional use.
Which would be a public hearing, one way or another. Okay, thank you very much, Jerry. Attorney Abid is here. If, I would like you to consider, not to consider, if you would, could you draft an ordinance with the intent to address the issue of abandoned shopping carts? I mentioned that to you briefly. It's just with, at my end of town, it's Walmart, sometimes it's some of the Dollar Generals with carts. You find those carts all over in West Biloxi, in the woods, on the sidewalks, and sometimes in private residences. And other cities deal with that, but I'm just thinking, that's a public safety issue. And I would assume, because these carts aren't cheap, they got to be 100, 150 bucks each. I mean, so that's money that's walking off, but those retailers, I just think we need to have something in place and kind of get everybody on board, and there needs to be some consequence to just letting your carts wander off and end up in the street, on the sidewalk, in the woods.
I don't think they have a title to those carts, so it'd be kind of obvious that it was...
We could slap a sticker on them like golf carts, couldn't we? I'm just saying.
Get $25.
Okay, but if you would, Peter...
We'll take a shot at that.
Okay, thank you. The city has a public events guideline that I know is on the, I think, the police department, the website for folks who are doing events. It's kind of a quick down and dirty, here's what you need to do and all of that. Are we, I assume those guidelines are followed, Chief?
Most of the time they are. We're in the process now, Attorney Abid, to ban with some of that and get different event policy.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. I just think that if we're going to have these guidelines, there should be some consequences. And most of the events are fine, but there are some events where it would just help if we could screen some of these vendors and permits and do the background checks like we're supposed to, and have time to do that, and then monitor those things, either through code enforcement or whatever. I think it's a great idea. I'd like a draft, as soon as you have a draft, I'd like to look. I'm getting excited thinking about it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a few things. One has to do with trailer parks, the debris pickup. This is just what I heard, I just need to try to get some clarification on this, that they'll pick up one pile per week in a trailer park? Is that correct?
That's not right.
Okay.
Now, the trailer parks are all different. In some cases, some of the really well-run trailer parks, I'm just looking back at a friend back in the audience, have gone to a dumpster that's a whole lot neater, and they just pay a fee for that dumpster, and then they pass that along to their residents. Many of the parks have just individual dumps, individual cans. Problem with individual cans is the roadway in and amongst the trailer park trailers is sometimes not suitable for the big trucks to get to. There's no limit, as long as they've got a can, we pick up what's in the can. If it's not in the can, we don't pick it up.
Okay. So the option would go to a dumpster, a general dumpster?
This is what we've recommended to the parks. I mean, they've got the same problem with water. In some cases, there's one master meter, and they just bill the customers some specific fee, and in some cases, there's individual meters, so they're all different.
Yeah, I think in this case, that's what's going on. They got one or three meters for the entire park, and I don't know if they could pay an extra fee or how they get that additional service. I'm just trying to bridge that gap. I guess I can get in touch with our contractor and let him talk to the owner and see if we can answer some questions. I'm just seeing if anybody knew, you know, a remedy today.
We treat a trailer the same as a single-family residence. They get a can, they pay for the can, we pick up the can once a week.
So if it was a residence, and I put my debris out in front of my trailer, and you got 50 trailers out there, how is that viewed? Because sometimes there's, you know, some debris that they put on the curb and... So would that be treated as a single-family home if they had a...
Let me talk to Alan Lang, see what they do. I'm sure that in the case of a park like that, where they're really tightly situated, it would be appropriate for that to be, have a general area where they put their debris.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. The next item that I have, just if Christie, I can ask you to come up to the front. I wrote out to Hickman, I see some of that work going on at Hickman, it's looking better. The ditches are being trenched a little bit. I don't know what's been discovered, if anything, but what's your assessment, if you have one at this time?
The ditches are looking good. The crossover pipes are, they look clear. I haven't been all the way to the end yet, where it curves, because they're still working down there. But the other ones, they look clear. We can't, which is good, because they're rusted, they're old galvanized pipes, so they're rusted through, so we're not going to be able to, like, clean them, so that was very good. Except for, like I said, the ones at the end, we haven't looked at those yet, but other than that, it's looking really good.
Okay, and what would the next step be, other than we trenched it and we're hoping the flow of the runoff is better?
Yep, the water should drain out of the ditches now, the water should drain out of the roadbed, which I think was a part of Supervisor Rocco's concerns. And they'll put some grass seed out there, and then that work out there will be done, unless those pipes at the very end look like they need to be replaced. Other than that, you know, we'll look at that, that time, and then we're ready to be paved.
You may want to stay here for a second. I think Councilman Barrett may have a question, but I do have one more question, maybe for Mike, and I know this is in Ward Four, but I've had some of residents in Ward Six question about repairs out there, and I told them I'd run this up the flagpole. Are we sure that everything was built to the original specs when we let that contract and they built those structures out there? Was it all built to our specifications, or...
Are you referring to the detention pond?
No, not the detention pond, mostly the little, there's a little gazebo to the right when you first drive in, that's got some red fencing around it, and that's what was specifically asked, and I really didn't know the answer.
Common area, then.
Okay.
So that's the responsibility of either the developer or the homeowners association. If there's not a homeowners association, then it's the responsibility of homeowners.
Causeway Park, Causeway Park.
So you're talking about, this is not a residence, we're talking about...
No, this is the Causeway, the Causeway Park.
All right, let's back up then. What's the question with the Causeway Park? Picking up trash?
Not picking up trash, the repairs to some of the gazebos and piers and...
Right, there's one in particular pavilion that was damaged during Hurricane Zeta, and we're still pursuing... I... Ask whether that PO has been issued or not. Can anybody help me back there?
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, we have not issued the PO on that yet. I think Tanya was still working out with FEMA, MEMA on the funding on that, but I will double check.
Remove some of the debris that's there too, I think.
Yes. Yes.
The part that fell over during an earlier storm has been, we've asked for Thailand's money to remove it. The pavilion that you're referring to is about three-quarters of the way up the road before you go into the gate, it's on the right-hand side, and that pavilion was damaged during Hurricane Zeta.
We'll check that out.
So the answer is, we're working on it?
Yeah.
Better than that, I know that we've gotten quotes, I just don't know if it's awarded yet or not.
Okay, but there's no sticking point on a grievance against it wasn't constructed properly, there's no, nothing like that, okay? That's really my main question.
Probably would never do that design again, the design where they got a single pile, and then it's kind of like a Y shape.
All right, and the last thing I have, I do want to comment on the mayor, your health condition. We told Councilman Demming that those Hail Marys and Our Fathers, that he prayed for you, would really work, so we appreciate that, Councilman Demming.
Councilman Barrett?
Christie, I have a couple things. I talked to Mike Costley, and he said that he would get with you on this, but I just wanted to follow up with you on it as well. Lorraine Road, we're right in front of Mr. Ball's property, where we cut the road several years ago to take water and sewer across the road, or maybe just sewer, that's starting to sink. And he said that he was going to get with you on that, on grading it, and I've gotten a lot of complaints on that. And then just south of there, right in front of the new storage unit that went in, the road was cut for something there as well, to connect to either water or sewer. And so that spot as well, both of those are starting to sink really bad, and I'm getting a lot of complaints on those. So if you could follow up with Mike on that and see what we need to do.
Absolutely.
And then Washfeyard Road, where the blacktop meets the bridge, I've gotten a lot of complaints on that. I talked to him as well, and he said that that would also need to be, instead of just patchwork, he said that would probably need to be put in and graded or whatever.
Yeah.
And so if we can look at that, I've gotten multiple complaints on that in the last couple of weeks, so I think that's worsening. And then the only other thing I have for you is the water sewer project, that Shriners project that's going north, a lot of the people on Jim Byrd are seeing that, and so they've started to call and ask about availability of water and sewer. Is there any way that we can get something in the works to start a design to, you know, on those crossroads to go to the west off of tie-in to the Shriners project and go to the west to start, you know, at least the design so that we can, you know, look at offering that in the near future?
Yeah, I can discuss that with Mike and the mayor about getting us a project started.
I've just gotten, I asked the last meeting about the people on the other side of the road, we're asking about bringing it over.
Right.
And I know that this is, will be a much larger chore than that, but if we can at least start the design work on that to move forward, that would be great, and...
Our handicap, Councilman, is that Jim Byrd Road itself is so narrow that we really are going to have a struggle putting water and sewer up that road.
Yeah, up the road itself, but there are a lot of roads that are off Jim Byrd that we could easily go in off of Shriners and tie into that, that they run. So if you go up north, up Jim Byrd, to the right side, which would be on the east side of Jim Byrd Road, those roads run all the way almost to Shriners. They're basically separated by a ditch. And so a lot of those roads probably could very easily have water and sewer brought to them from Shriners without even, you know, affecting Jim Byrd at all. These are roads that are off of Jim Byrd, and that's the majority of the population on that road is off the right side, which would be the east side of that road. So that's something, you know, we could get a lot of those people with a simple run off of Shriners, and so something that we can look at to see.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then it was great to see, that's all I have for you, it was great to see the great crowds we had at Mardi Gras both Saturday night and Tuesday. Our police department, fire department did a great job, perfect weather, so it's always good to see our streets packed here in Biloxi. And then the last thing, Jerry, I know that we've done something on the right by Colville Grocery, I continue to get a lot of calls on that. They did pull one of those mobile homes out of there, but they, there's still a lot of them, and I know that we have some notices on them, but just so I can update people, can you tell me what the status is on that, or, you know, what's happening?
That's going through community court right now.
Okay.
If we can't get any relief through community court, it'll be coming to the city council.
And then we can vote to basically have somebody come in, tear them down, and haul them away?
That's correct.
Or pull them out, or whatever, if they're able to do that?
That's right.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. And I have a couple of things. I want to footstomp what you said about Mardi Gras, the mayor hosting our great wonderful senator. I think he enjoyed himself throughout the holidays, and I believe he had a festive time also.
We did too, Demmin.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we had a festive times, absolutely. I want to do a shout-out to our Black History Program this evening at 6 o'clock, make preparations to come on out. And also, we have an award meeting March 14th at 5:30 at the Civic Center, March 14th, 6 o'clock. That concludes my comments, and that concludes our presentation agenda. We're going to move on to the public agenda with citizen comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes, three minutes per person, three minutes per person. Is there anyone on my left side that would like to come up and speak?
My name is Wendy Lally, and I live at 324 Fairview Drive. My family and I have lived in Edgewater Estates for nine years. I have some concerns about the proposed rezoning of cotton-forested property, which is to be purchased by Keisler Federal Credit Union, with plans to develop this property into their international headquarters. On February 8th, over 45 neighbors met with Dr. Tisdale, Mr. George Mitchell, Executive Vice President of Keisler Federal, and Mr. Creel. We had a very candid question-and-answer discussion about this proposed zoning change and future development of this property. Several concerns were mentioned. The parking space and size of the parking lot needed to accommodate the anticipated 500 to 1,400 additional employees at this location. This does present a safety concern with many homeowners, such as myself, having a parking lot and lighting in the, next to their backyards. Another concern is increased traffic on Pass Road, increased traffic through residential streets like Big Lake and Old Bay Roads, and increased traffic across the already inadequate Popisserie Bridge. Should the international headquarters be built, this will also put a strain on the old and failing infrastructure in West Biloxi. Our property values may be negatively affected, and this also contains many wildlife and trees in our area, which would be put at risk for removal or displacement. Council members, I do hope that you take the time to read the entire case presented to you. There are notes from the planning commission meeting, where many residents also showed up with their own questions and concerns. In light of so many Edgewater Estates, Oak Ridge, and Parkview residents being directly impacted by this proposal, we would kindly ask that any future council meetings involving this case be presented at the evening meeting, so more residents are able to attend without having to miss work. Businesses, homeowners, and the city all need to work together to keep Biloxi the beautiful place we all call home. Council members, thank you again for your time and for your service to Biloxi.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Is there anyone else on my left?
Hello, my name is William Harper, and I live at 351 Oak Ridge Circle, which is on the eastern side of this proposed project. I attended the planning commission meeting and the neighborhood meeting where Mr. George Mitchell from Keisler Credit Union spoke and answered a lot of questions. I would like to voice some concerns and offer some thought to you as well. The section of this property between the two old fairways, which runs both sides, has a very large stand of old, old live oak trees. It has many large old pine trees, one of which right now has a large eagle's nest in it, and there are many other trees that are native to this local area. It has a small spring-fed stream which produces a large wetland area which flows directly behind residents on Parkview Avenue. The middle section of this property is also one of the few forested areas on the Biloxi Peninsula which should be left in its natural state, considering what is happening with global warming worldwide. If this project is approved and moved forward, I would hope everyone involved would appreciate and consider the value of maintaining this part of this property in its natural state. As a retired teacher, I personally have planted over 25 trees on the Popisserie Elementary School campus, planted trees on Burnwood Old Property, and three live oaks in front of the old Michelle School Campus, which are still standing today. We need to save as many old trees, especially live oaks, as possible for future generations of Biloxians. I request that each of you, if you have not done already, to take a walk from Fairway View Avenue onto this property and walk through it until you reach the forested section and realize what is actually going on there, before, of course, turning those sections into large parking lots. I, like many neighbors on both sides of this property, walk this property and appreciate the beauty and the value that it is for all Biloxians. Thank each of you for all that you do for the citizens of Biloxi.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Say anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Say anyone else on my right?
Good evening, everybody. I come with some good news. I wanted to thank Brother Peter for opening that gate, y'all. I ain't got the fuss about that. I wanna thank y'all for opening the gate for us to go in where the kids can now play. I'm able to go in with my grandbaby, which is behind me. And I just wanna come back to thank Peter for keeping his word. Brother P- Peter, we like in the Bible. Cause I appreciate him, him opening that gate. He promised me that it was gonna come off. He kept his word. And that mean a lot. Your word is a bond and that mean a lot. I just have one more thing. We do need another day pickup day for trash, cause the trash is really blowing out of people's garbage can. I live on the end street and it's coming to the end where I live. I think we need another day pickup. Mr. Phoenix guy, brother guy, I think we need another pickup day if it, if it's not a problem. We need one more day pickup. Thank y'all. I love y'all. Y'all did a wonderful job. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Louis Elias. I'm a candidate for sheriff in Harrison County. I wanna first thank you for the opportunity to speak to each of you. I felt compelled after talking to a number of business owners to share a portion of my platform with you. Our coast is growing. I'm so proud of, of our entire coast, particularly Biloxi. I've worked here for about the last fifteen years directing our law enforcement training academy. But one thing businesses across the coast have in common is their trouble with the homeless, their trouble with repeat offenders and their employees fearing coming in in the morning, having to step over these individuals. I believe that as a sheriff's office, we are part of that problem and we will be the solution. My plan is to move forward with allowing misdemeanor, uh, offenders to be brought back into our facility, including our facility that was recently remodeled on Lorraine Cowan Road. I hope as we move forward, if God willing, I move into that office, that you all will support me in those efforts and help untie the hands of local law enforcement and take some of these complaints off of your table in, in return. I have, I have an enormous list of platform issues. I know your time is limited. My other passion is threat mitigation and, and addressing the issues that face our schools and churches and shopping centers, casinos. It will be done, uh, by a completely different approach, totally new model. I look forward to sharing that with you all in the future. Again, thank you for your time and hopefully we'll get to talk to you soon. I appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? Okay, with that being said, citizen comments are now closed. We're gonna move on to our policy agenda ordinance A, first reading.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment for a change in zoning from RS five high-density single-family residential to LV limited business for an unaddressed parcel fronting pass road.
Need a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dr. Tisdale. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Glavine. This is the first reading. This is the first reading. Gonna move on to resolution B.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for fourteen zero nine four Hudson Cron Road.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Glavine.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions on it?
Director, give us a little bit of background on this, please. It's a minor, minor plat, right? It's not a big deal.
That's all it is. Uh, the owner of the property is splitting the large piece of property into three pieces that I'll make code to sell to some family members. That's all.
Good enough for me.
Okay, any other questions? Have been, I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? Okay, seven zero, motion carries. I need a motion on the consent agenda.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
You gotta add.
Got an add, see.
Oh, we missed, I missed one then.
Okay, I have one to review. Yeah, four C.
Four C, here we go.
There you go.
Okay, I need a motion on four C.
I'll make the.
Moved by Mr. Barrett.
She's gotta read it.
Oh, she gotta read it, okay.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to add ten recreational vehicle sites within an existing mobile home park for property located at one two two zero zero Old Highway sixty-seven.
Okay, I need a motion on it, Mr. Barrett.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Glavine.
It was already seconded. Y'all moved and seconded it.
What did she say?
It was already moved and seconded.
Okay, I can't hear. So who was it moved by?
Me.
Barrett and Glavine.
Barrett, oh, okay.
This, this is, was originally on the agenda for the ten R, we rezoned the property to neighborhood business, correct? And then following that, it was on the agenda for ten RV spots as well as, um, some short-term rental. The owner of the property has requested that the short-term rentals be taking, taken off. And at this point, we're only gonna vote on the ten RV spots. And they may or may not come back later and ask for, um, the short-term rentals. But the only way to do it, the way that they were asking, was to, um, resurvey the property and split it. So at this time, they're not going to, um, request the short-term rentals. So this is just for the ten RV spots. So I have no, no questions or anything on that.
Mr. Glavine?
I have no further comments.
Anyone else? Yeah, I'll call for a question. All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Okay, there's not another one, is it? Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, a couple of things, uh, on the municipal report. On the bottom, you got nine and ten not available. Was there any particular reason it wasn't answered? Everything else was answered, yes or no, whatever. But on the, the last two items on the resolution, you got not, NA. I was just wondering why those two wasn't, not available, I guess.
Yeah, it, well, it talks about, did we do legal publication if we had a budgetary change of ten percent or more to the budget? And since we did not have any of those, we didn't have a budgetary change of more than ten percent. So we didn't have to. So that, that's, that means not applicable. And I guess the, the next one is if revenues are less than estimated and a deficit is anticipated, did we revise the budget by the regular July meeting? And those conditions didn't apply either.
And if we had to do those, then we'd follow the, the right, uh, direction to do it, correct?
Yeah, I think this number ten is like, if you're halfway through your year and you're not on any projections and you're gonna, you're in a deficit sort of position, then you've gotta come in and do some special budget amendments. But we, we, we didn't have that issue.
And, and the other one, Peter, is G, the bond. What, what's that on the table for again this time? G. Like in golf.
I think that's just to recognize the interest that's been earned on the bond. It was not, um,
Thousand dollars. Just gonna park it in a project.
Earned entrance on the, our earned interest on the bond, the twenty seventeen bond, we have to recognize that earned interest.
You put that back inside the bond or do you separate it? The interest.
I can't understand you.
What we needed to do with that, the, the, for, did, did you spend it like any part of the bond, right? The four, about four thousand dollars in interest, yeah. Just spend it like an additional cash of the bond.
That's what it adds to the bond. And the last one, uh, Mike, is the, the sixteen thousand we added. What, what was that for?
The sixteen, you were talking about the, uh, construction agreement?
Yeah.
That the ad, that, uh, you, you, the council has previously approved the closing of the crossing at Holly Street. The next step that we're taking is a construction agreement, which is an agreement between us and CSX over minor costs associated with them flagging, providing flagging and also doing anything about moving the safety equipment and so forth.
To close it.
So to, in order to close it. So that's being approved today. Uh, and, uh, now we will schedule the closing and will, will, that'll be announced well in advance.
That's to coincide with the extension, you know, the third closing, so we can cross, uh, the, the Popisserie.
And you have to, you have two rows on both sides of the railroad tracks, so closing Holly is not gonna really affect a lot of anything.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Did that last road on the north side.
It's, it's kind of, it's kind of a screwy curve too, once you move north, so it's, uh.
It's always been that way though, both of them. That's when you used to be able to drop the car and see how fast you could fly. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Muslim, Ms. Newman? Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, on that, uh, same questionnaire, that's item R, um, all of those were answered accurately and truthfully, correct?
Correct.
We would expect nothing less. Thank you. That's it.
Let's be a sidebar.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale, you done? Uh, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I got a question on M. M like in Marinovich.
M like Mike.
So i- is this a requirement? Is this?
Work well, yeah. Yes, sir. To, uh, to comply with, uh, NFPA standards, we are required, at least all of our, our certified firefighters to have an annual physical, uh, to check our respiratory function and, uh, physical health.
Who has, uh, conducted this in the past?
Uh, Wesley Merritt. Merritt Health here, uh, is not capable, but they're, uh, in partnership up in Hattiesburg and they have the capabilities.
Okay, thank you, chief.
That's it, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, Ms. Barrett?
Only question I have is on item J. This is just, um, an addendum because we received, um, grant money after the contract was awarded. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, that's all I have.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And I have, uh, one thing, uh, I know we're talking about. The main street, do we have a date on it?
The closure of Holly.
Uh, well, a date on, I know we're closing one, but we're gonna be doing some repairs on, on Main Street with the grade. And I was just kinda wondering.
That project is ready to go. It's on hold right now because CSX is not able to provide the flaggers that they are necessary for us to work there.
Okay.
So we're on a little delay. It's been bid, it's been awarded. We've given a notice to proceed it. They're ready to go. We just kinda hung, hung up on, uh, with CSX and their flaggers.
Okay.
It'll be, it, 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 I'm sure will be within thirty days.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. Okay, well, that being said, I'm, uh, you got one more thing? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, CSX, what about the passenger train? Everybody she was asked, are they moving forward, stopping in Biloxi places or, or are they still looking at doing the whole coastline?
They still looking in Mobile, New Orleans, back and forth. And if you notice, pretty much every day, there's a test train with one passenger and, and, uh, often forward and that's moving, you know, it, it, it moves back and forth. I guess they're testing and, you know, at speed and, and things, uh, conditions, but they're in, in, in the midst of that and Senator, uh, Wicker was hot, you know, to, uh, kinda, support what, what's happening. So we expect that to happen sooner than later.
I know we put our land down in Biloxi, so at least you can get off right there. But they go far, we're gonna build a, building adept at, right by the CTA.
Right. It's gonna be a structure that will be constructed based on, on, uh, some specs, but there, what's there right now is temporary. And we expect that, uh, you know, a depot to be, uh, built and, you know, with, uh, according to, I guess, both of them, if it works out.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? Okay, seven zero, any exceptions?
None.
None? Newman? Demming? Tisdale?
None.
Barrett, okay. Past seven, no. Okay, we're gonna move on to the con, move on to the code enforcement hearings. Uh, before that, I just wanna clarify something real quick. Um, the Keesler won't be voted on until next week. Won't be voted on to next week.
Night meeting at six.
Night meeting?
The night meeting at six, as Dr. Tisdale told me. Okay, Ms., Ms. Creel?
Okay. Item A on the agenda, John Osevato and Janda Seymour, three forty-three Railroad Street. That case has been resolved. Item B, Arthur and Ramona Basketta, two twenty-four Howard Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item C, Michael and Angela Broussard, two twenty Howard Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item D, Reginald Collier, three forty-five Fayard Street. That case has been resolved. Item E, Thou Own Don, one fifty-two Pine Street. That case has been resolved. Uh, item F, Iona German Estate, one sixty-five Crawford Street. That case has been resolved. Item G, Michael A. Jones, one fifty Pine Street. Uh, I would ask the council for thirty days on that one. Uh, I have any communication with them and.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Demming. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, seven zero, or thirty days.
Okay. Item H, Hung V. Li, three fourteen Crawford Street. That case has been resolved. Item I, Juan Randall Senior and Judy L. Lesso, two thirty-six Crawford Street. That case has been resolved. Item J, Gilbert R. Mason Senior Estate, three sixty-five Fayard Street. I would ask for thirty days on that.
I'm gonna move that for thirty days. Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Seven zero.
Okay. Item K, Michael S. McCarty, nine ninety-one Division Street. That case has been resolved. Item L, Thiet Nguyen and High Thanh Den, three twenty Crawford Street. That case has been resolved. Item M, Beverly Trayhanna State, eight oh five Elder Street. I'd like to ask for thirty days on that case. They have started working on it.
Moving on, it's Lawrence. I'll second that. Uh, any questions? All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry.
Item N has a new owner, so we're gonna have to go back and start over. So, uh, that one is still in violation, but we just have to go back and start the process again.
Thank you. Seem like everybody did their job this time. Thank you, Ms. Creel. And we're gonna move on to the routine agenda.
The mood.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, Walt, we got any update on, on money coming in?
Good afternoon, council. Yes, sir, we do. We received two point two three four million last Thursday.
Wow, that's good. How about anything else coming?
Not yet, but we have a conference call with MEMA and FEMA this Thursday and we will definitely be asking.
We gotta be, we gotta be right in line, getting, we have to be right in line, getting the money, right?
That's right.
Not behind, we gotta be.
No, we're always at least, we try to be at least sixty days advance at all times.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Need to do a quick executive session, if you don't mind. Okay, um, yeah, I wanna call for a question on routine agenda. Uh, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. It's a quick executive session. We need about five minutes of y'all time. So I'm gonna ask, uh, council to go into closed session for the purpose of examining necessity, go into executive session.
I move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second. Seconded by Ms. Newman. I need the council to conclude in, uh, closed session and recon. Oh, vote. Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, six zero, six one. I need the council to conclude to go into session for the reconvene of, in an open meeting. I need the council to conclude to go into session for the reconvene in an open meeting. Need a motion. Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Ms. Newman. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, six one. And I need to vote to go into the executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Ms. Newman, all in favor?
For the, for what?
Okay, six one.
Stay, for what purpose?
For the purpose of personnel matters. Personnel matters. Okay, okay.